Thirty seconds here. We'll then call this meeting to order. Today's date is March the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and this is the TELCITY Common Council. If you all will please stand with me and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Please may be seated. All right. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I do not have any additions or changes. Are there any from the council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion made by Larry. Is there a second? Second by Julie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, the next item is presentations of minutes for approval. This is from your, the one on the sixth of last month. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes that anybody has? There are none, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Phillip. Is there a second? Second by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion stands approved. Next item on the agenda is comments of citizens. If there are any citizens that would like to make any comments of anything that's not on the agenda, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please.
Thank you. I just got a real quick question. It's all of this. Um, the money that they gave, I'm not here on board, but I was treating, uh, the money we gave to the school for a bus when they ended up with a trailer, and I don't see how much about that bus. Did they get the bus, or they just?
They have not purchased the bus at this time yet. I think they're still.
I thought it was my choice to get a trailer, but I didn't know.
I didn't know anything about them buying a trailer.
I seen some on Facebook about them buying a trailer or something like that, or might have been trailer.
Might have just been for the band. I know they needed, I thought they were trying to raise money for it at one point, but I couldn't tell you. But the bus thing is still something I believe the school's moving forward with. Yep.
And we have not written a check to them or anything. We've not given them that many yet.
Yep.
It's on the, it's on the, for the additional cooperation request for tonight, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Any other comments of citizens? All right. Move on to committee and board reports. We'll start with Board One, Mr. Larry Kleeman.
Uh, yes. Um, some of these, um, directly apply to my department, but I find it interesting, some of them, um, if ever worked out, I attended a ceremony at Lincoln National Memorial, they celebrated President Lincoln's birthday, and they had a wreath laying at Nancy Hanks' Lincoln Bridge site, and, um, it was a very interesting ceremony, and I got to participate. And there was a part of the program, there was an author, I can't remember his name now, but he's written the book about Thomas Lincoln, Abraham Lincoln's father, and so I came home with a digital book to read, but it was, it was a great ceremony. I was glad I got the opportunity to go.
You know, Larry, just to not change your topic, but Thomas Lincoln was a cabinet maker, and some of his cabinets are still around the area. They're extremely valuable. If you have them, you might have something worth several thousand. They've been on Antiques Roadshow even. I mean, they're, it's a big deal. So, there you go.
I've been working first, a little closer along, I did attend the county commissioners' meeting, it was a two-hour meeting, mostly on the, uh, city railway, on the train, uh, consumed about an hour of the meeting, um, and just later talked a little bit more about the animal shelter, so, um, I did attend that meeting. Um, on the twenty-seventh, I attended a TELCITY historical meeting, um, where Jim Fiedler, he gave a presentation on, uh, September eleventh, uh, two thousand and one. Jim was in New York City and worked in a building across from the World Trade Centers. Um, and, uh, he did not work in the World Trade Center, but his wife at that time did, but she was not present for it that day because she was on maternity leave, so it was a very interesting presentation, and, uh, we have a great historical society, and I'm a fellow of the level in law.
Yeah, I'm the president again.
It was a great, it was a great program.
Thank you.
Larry, point there. A student that I had, Stacy Peak, died, and she worked for Carson.
Cantor Fitzgerald.
Cantor Fitzgerald, the same company his wife worked for.
Hundred and fourth.
Yeah, Stacy Peak.
If, speaking of your program, if anybody would like to watch that program, it was recorded, and it's the, I think it's, it's posted on my personal YouTube channel, but if you type in TELCITY Historical Society nine eleven, it should pull up on YouTube. There's probably three parts, two or four. Take a look and watch it if you want to. And the newspaper article today is really, they did a really nice job, Perry County News did an article today on it too, so I'd like to kind of catch up soon. Thank you. And moving on, Mr. Julie Koller, Board Two.
Um, we will, uh, this Thursday night, and there is a new, I can't remember if this has been, there is a new committee that basically took over the beautification and also, what was the name?
Break, break, break.
The Great Vibrance, because that's called TELCITY Strong. And it's, it's set up quite different from, I'm not sure, I wasn't on the Great Vibrance about beautification. I mean, basically, we did just, um, do pretty many things here, the chili cook-off, which was in November, and then Christmas in the park. Um, and now it's set up to where I think they're going to try to do one special thing each month. Um, the first one is coming up this Saturday. Correct? This is this Saturday. Main Street stroll, um, they do have a Facebook page where you can get information about these, but each month they are trying to have some different activity, activity set up. Um, they just want to promote Main Street, businesses on Main Street, and keep it thriving basically, so I think it's, it's a good, good thing that's going forward, and, um, all the members of the committee, and there's a lot of people, so it looks like it's going to be a good group. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll add just a little bit. Uh, in April, we're going to have the Mayor's, the second annual Mayor's Easter egg hunt. Uh, we're going to put a Facebook post out asking for people to bring in plastic Easter eggs and fill them or not. If they're not filled, we'll fill them. I have a school intern this year, um, and she'll work on filling them, and second year, like I said, for it, and we're looking forward to that. In May, I think they're going to have a Movies in the Park, kind of centering that around, that's Police Smoke, May, so they're going to have a little movie maybe about it. Fireworks we'll do probably in July, I think, I forgot what they have for June, can't remember. August, or, August they're looking at something, and you guys heard it first, maybe bringing back the old bed races, which would be really exciting. I don't remember them in my lifetime, but I hear they were awesome. So, we shall see. Um, and then as you roll into the fall, there's a lot of activities, you know, chili cook-off, and they may change it to soup cook-off rather than chili, because some people can't eat chili or don't, so it's like vegetable soup or potato, they could try all that, you know, it's great. And then they're to roll right into the Christmas, so forth, so. Uh, it's a great committee, Heather Lawton's the chairman, so reach out to her or like the Facebook page, we appreciate it. Uh, they're really going to try to do some great things in this downtown area and hopefully give that group a shot in the arm, I think it needed to get it going again, so. All right. Mr. Phillip Simpson, Ward Three.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I got to tour the William TELC Center, that was a really neat tour, it's coming along. Uh, Main Streets look great, it's all the new sidewalks.
Okay. I think you were saying something about the new street signs. We only got one up so far really, I think. Twelfth, or excuse me, fifteenth and Jefferson. It was in the back of Perry County, so we haven't put anything out on social media yet, but, uh, I'll share them later. All right. Mr. Gary Morton, Ward Four.
Uh, I got a report here from recycling, just, we had a meeting on February twenty-third. Few things here, uh, commodity prices, very little change for the last, uh, winter. They are, they had two loads of cardboard getting ready to go out, so I assume that's been sold. The amount of money collected so far on our fees, uh, one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, and that's twenty-five hundred and ninety-four, twenty-two thousand five ninety-four out of a total of eight thousand two eighty-one, and the, the deadline for those fees being paid is March fifteenth. The thing that's kind of hard to figure out sometimes is people will, uh, for various reasons, not pay that fee, and yet when they're taken to small claims court, the fee will be two or three times more, so I don't know if, if they're not very good at math or what, but, uh, the amount they pay, uh, then will be much more than they would pay if they just pay the fee. Okay, um, uh, something has happened to Mayor, we talked about it, but it has happened, and that is Shepherd Hatchery Road, the road there behind, patio, for some reason over the years, that's, that's been a, a great place to throw away your couch, your chair, uh, your recliner.
Spare tires.
Tires.
Messers.
All kinds of things, and, uh, we had to clean up the county and saw the waste district together worked on that.
With the city accountant too.
City accountant, uh, brought in some equipment, and they've got that cleaned up. Now the challenge will be, can we keep it clean? And, uh, I think we're going to put numerous signs up there, no dumping, and I hope that whatever the maximum is on the ordinance, if anybody's caught dumping, they, they nail them with a very maximum fine, because that, that's, this should not go on in our county. Uh, that kind of stuff, not at all. Um, let's see what else I've got here. If you're there at the drop-off point there in Catalin, you know that in the wintertime, the area just doesn't drain well. Uh, we could probably spend thousands of dollars up there running all kinds of drainage and stuff, but it hasn't happened yet, obviously, so we're looking at doing some concrete work right in front of those dumpster containers that sit there, so when you get out of your car, you don't have to be, you know, stepping in mud. I mean, it's not mud, but it's just gravelly, watery kind of mess. Yeah, it's just a slur, kind of slurry, I guess.
That, that parking lot has eaten tons and tons of gravel.
Oh, yeah, we.
Put it on and it.
More rocks on it all the time, but this is going to be a concrete pad. When you drive in there, you should be able to get out of your car, be on concrete, dump your container, get back in, and, and I think everybody in the county will benefit from that, so we are working on that.
If it eats a concrete pad, we'll just know it's hungry.
Okay, so, uh, really, that's about it.
All right. Thank you, Gary. And Councilman Barnes, Mr. John Little.
I don't have anything specific to report, just, uh, our utilities and all did a great job through the storm we had this last week, went out and drove around after that, and the drains were slow, but they were drained, and, uh, they were taking care of some trees and things like that, so I recommend all our utilities for all the work they did over the weekend.
Good. And I will add for those that may have not have heard or been part of the last meeting with the Board of Works, Nineteenth and Lafayette.
Ninth and Lafayette.
Ninth, I'm sorry, not Nineteenth. Yeah, that's way. Uh, Ninth and Lafayette, um, there was a, um, a bunch of clogs of, of bottles and debris that had clogged that and prevented it from draining properly, that's why it flooded in that area, and so first thing Monday, today, Chris and the wastewater department went in there and was able to vacuum that out, so it's important that you don't allow litter, such as, you know, drink bottles and whatever to get down the storm drains, because that will clog them up, causing that issue, and flood people's yards, and whatever else it could flood, so. But it was taken care of, so, uh, that should be, should be fixed. We'll find out the next big heavy rainstorm if it worked or not, if there's still anything else in there, but I just don't want residents and anybody that's who's a reward that is to think that it wasn't unnoticed, and it was taken care of, so. All right. Any comments or statements from the city attorney or the clerk treasurer?
Julie touched on the plan commission, has a meeting on Thursday. Um, I brought it up in the Board of Works, uh, TELCITY Electric Department's petitioning to vacate the alley, um, adjacent to where they're building the new substation down there. Um, I believe everything's in order, I don't believe this is going to be controversial, it should be a very quick meeting, but, uh, making everybody aware that that petition is pending before the plan commission. There would be an ordinance that the city council would adopt at their next meeting after that, yeah. I haven't drafted it yet, but I don't want to count that chicken before it's hatched, but pretty good chance. We'll, we'll twist the arms of everybody else to make sure we get enough votes.
Okay. And Connie, did you have anything?
I have no report, no.
Okay. All right. Um, that concludes the, uh, committee and board reports. We'll move down to owed business. Habitat for Humanity ARP grant agreement. Uh, out in the audience, I see several members of the Habitat for Humanity, uh, group and board. Um, if you guys will make some comments, that's great, but give us just a moment, uh, I'm going to let Jeff kind of explain this agreement, or whatever he's come up with here, and then if there's any other questions or if you guys make comments, I'd be more than happy to allow you time to do that as well. So Jeff, you, this was brought up from our last meeting where we were told we couldn't, but then there were some things, maybe some, I don't know, language, so.
I can, I can explain that. Yeah, I can explain that. But pursuant to the ARPA rules, we would not be able to give money in the form of a donation, um, to charity, whether it be Habitat for Humanity or any other charity, we can't, the city's not in the business of making charitable donations. The city does make grants, make grant awards. Um, we have done that, uh, primarily through our RLF revolving loan fund over the years, um, and what we did, um, in order to facilitate, uh, the construction, there's ongoing construction of one home, there are at least, Josh, you correct me if I'm wrong, two more in the hopper. Um, uh, what we've done here is put together a, a proposed grant agreement that would be used by Habitat to pay for materials, uh, related costs, um, there's a whole list, if you look at the exhibit on the back of the various costs that Habitat would be used. They would be earmarked specifically for projects in TELCITY, um, so that this goes toward TELCITY Housing. Um, there would be, there are provisions in here for accounting for the money, there would be a separate fund set up by, by Habitat, so they would not commingle this with their general account funds. Um, very specific and focused on what this, these funds could be used for. I would note there are still a couple of blanks that I've got to, to fill in, um, although I thi, I believe the version of the document that has been sent around, I think the only empty spots, section, section eleven, project monitoring, um, I, I will incorporate some dates with regard to, uh, various notices. I, I would note that there are, those are some notices that are likely not ever going to be sent by either side. Um, has provisions in here for what happens if the money's not spent, um, I believe based upon the plans that Habitat has, that's also very unlikely, they're going to, they're going to find appropriate homes and appropriate building sites and spend these funds. Josh can tell you, I did not bring my notes, I believe the difference in cost to build a home for Habitat from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty was around forty-five thousand dollars more expensive, um, so this would go to replacement of those costs. Uh, work closely with Chris, Chris Bruner, I believe it is, with Baker Tilly, um, he, uh, he, he deserves most, most of the kudos for the, uh, very thorough and extensive grant agreement. Um, it has, it includes all of the language that, uh, are typically included in your boilerplate contracts for state grant making. Um, I'm very familiar with those from many years ago when I worked in the Attorney General's office reviewing similar documents. So overall, um, this is a fifty thousand dollar grant with a, uh, pretty narrow focus on what the funds can be used for, how, uh, Habitat would account for those, provide updates periodically with regard to how those funds are being spent. Um, overall, fairly straightforward program, so, um, I invite you guys, if you have anything else to, to add in terms of the plan.
Before they do, I want council to have their discussion.
Oh, okay.
I know, I'm hearing it too, and I don't know what's wrong with it. Jeff just talks too loud.
I, that could be it. I just have one of those voices that are conducive to amplifying it in public. I've noticed it too, though, kind of an echo effect, yeah, very odd when you're speaking and. Technically, they have to be spent by the city, by that A. They would, uh. I believe we did incorporate that in here, um, we had some discussions with Josh.
I don't hear it, do you? I've heard, I can hear you with, but I think you might.
I'm, I'm pretty loud without.
Yeah, I know. I'm just.
Appropriated by two thousand and twenty-four, spent by two thousand and sixty, right?
Yeah, I think that's right, but I think in our discussions, Habitat doesn't have any concerns about spending A.
We, we did, but item number eight, the term on.
Yeah.
So the agreement is effective through December first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Correct, yeah.
I think the city's trying to actually, uh, December first, two thousand and twenty-four, when the funds have to be allocated.
Correct, that sounds right, yes. Yeah.
So if something happened and they didn't spend the money, we could have a month to find another project.
We would either have a month to find another project, or we'd have to modify our agreement to, to ensure that the funds are going to be spent properly.
Okay. The only thing, I just, for your explanation, uh, I distributed a reference of the, uh, minimum level of homes, and I distributed the, the income guidelines that Habitat uses so that, you know, they may reference, say, use for some of the median, these, these are the income guidelines that they use. I think they must have a median income of, uh, thirty percent, or the law, I defer to the law, that they're market, cannot have an income greater than eighty percent of the median, so those are, uh, time, so those are the big. Those are gross.
Yeah.
Gross.
Julie, did you have some questions? I'm sorry.
I just, this is a, the fifty thousand, that would be used, not, not just for the, the next home that you're doing, but for the next two or three, is that all right?
Yeah, the, the.
But they don't probably be used for more than just one home, or maybe not.
You cer, you certainly could, as long as it's in TELCITY. Uh, I think the, the, I kind of lost my train of thought there. The way to view this is, is that it is going to certainly benefit homeowners in TELCITY, it's going to benefit Habitat too, because the dollars they're spending get stretched that much further. The homeowners pay market price for the home, they get a zero percent interest mortgage, but they buy the home at a market price, so this is not going to lower the price of the home. No, no, no homeowner's getting a gift. Any, any TELCITY resident out there shouldn't be viewing this as, well, these people got forty-five, fifty thousand dollars knocked off the price of their home. That's not the way it works, and these guys will correct me if I'm wrong about this. It will just mean that the dollars that Habitat spends go further towards building more homes. Does that make sense?
So council, this is kind of the discussion point on this, before I have anybody from Habitat come up and speak, if they wish to, is there any other discussion amongst the council regarding this, this time? Josh, Dave, any of you guys, Paul, do you have any questions? I didn't get your name, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions or concerns, or any, any points you want to clear up that you make have been asked that?
No, I, I think honestly, Jim, you did a great job explaining what we do. I'll just point out, though, you know, we, we are, all of our homeowners pay proper taxes like any other citizen would, uh, they do, they set, pay for market value, but that zero percent interest, a lot of times when we hear that zero percent interest loan, well, that's nice, but if you look at how much you pay in interest over a thirty-year loan, it is substantial, and that is the financial blessing we, we give these families. And I want to say one other thing is, once they own this home, just as any other citizen can do in ten years, seven years, whatever it may be, they get a job over in San Diego, or, you know, they, they get a, they own a farm somewhere, they, they can sell this home, when they sell this home, you know, it, it goes right, it's adding to housing stock, it sells any, uh, specific housing stock, because we, this is an interest.
Starter home.
Starter home, housing stock, that, that's horrible, uh, folks that just need to know that, so, you guys will have any other questions, that's all I have to say, so.
Uh, what's your selection process for picking someone out?
That, you know, I, I can give you the one or the person, or I can give you the thirty minute.
We'll do the thirty, we've got all day. Let's do the one and see if we expand.
Yeah, because we're all, it's, it's heavy, you can be, be, a lot of other things, you can simply be, uh, a better house, a three better house, or even, this community, even a one, this is, is very expensive. Uh, you have to get the forward system, it's not a free home, and they have to pay the mortgage, with the way it throws itself, a ball in the window now, that's theirs to fix, whenever a water heater goes out, that's theirs to fix, they are homes, they have to get the forward system, and current residents are here in Indiana, uh, and then the, uh, need affordability, and, uh, when they get here, and they're willing to partner with us, partnering means that they will, uh, they will sweat every month, uh, and also some of the citizens that, they take, they take trash out, trash day, not two weeks before, and they ask, you know, bags on them, they move the trash, but you are seeing the, uh, the, the income guidelines, they're, they're, yeah, no.
Yeah, here's, here's, I could, Josh had emailed me, I didn't make copies for everybody, but that, you can have that, well, describes the whole process, and in fact, they encourage applications.
Yes, absolutely.
You can get a lot to line, or?
We are getting more and more applications, I think, as, as we're putting out our, about, what are our areas about, I think there's, there's so many misconceptions in the past, a lot of folks that didn't think they could have, and they thought they made too much money about it, and there are all kinds of random reasons, like, they think, they think they can, they can, well, but we're getting more of those, and, yeah, if you know somebody that, that you think that, 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 that application.
Do you guys ever tear down old houses that are shot and, uh, built there?
Did you, I, I mean, years ago, that, that happened, there was a burned-out house that, that we took this stuff and, Larry, I think, yeah, we, we did, we, we burned out aisles and we destroyed it and built, it was over across, uh, what used to be Little League Field, it makes sense, Little League Field, so, you know, that's the street.
All right. Some of those houses are, I mean, it costs a lot to tear them down and.
Like, we've done that. I noticed.
We have, we have done that.
We have a lot available on East Drive, I think, if you guys, too, we can talk about, but I noticed you all have worked to clear the lot across from Franklin School, there's a, a large, 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 large tree, and like a large limb of a tree from next door, I think someone, you might have even, I don't know, appreciate your work on that. Uh, but in, back in two thousand and ten, they helped, they partnered with the NSP program, I think, some, and I won't say flipped, but rehabilitated some of the houses, I think there was one on corner block of Tenth Street, I know that you did, you put like a porch on it, I think, and I remember that one more than any of them for some reason, I think, did you build one across from high school too?
Oh, we did, yeah.
Yeah, and that was part of, I think that was a demolition NSP kind of a joint thing, but, so they have fixed up homes, like the most recent one on Fourth Street, it was existing home, they went in there and took it to the studs, um, and totally rebuilt the house, basically, and I went to their dedication a month ago, two months ago now, and it was, wow, wow, they did a great job, and that's, that's a, a single lady who has two kids, and it's fantastic.
It's getting, it's getting properties back on the tax rolls that are not generating the tax revenue that they otherwise could, is one way to look at those.
So it's not just new construction too, they, they've also, I was just, we didn't talk about that much, I just want everybody to understand, it's not all brand-new homes.
Josh, is your goal like one a year, two a year, how many are you trying to do?
We're, we're wanting to do two a year, uh, and we're, I think we're, we're, maybe a two-minute goal, and then I think we want to do three a year, we're going to have to clone a year.
We, we, uh, yeah, oh, well, we have, our partnerships with Perry County and TELCITY and, okay. Perry County, uh, start our partnership, and then we'll go, we're bringing that, I don't know, but, wait, wait, and then, or, or the house, or, you know, so, so, ultimately, since, since, uh, Perry County was very, very, well, we, we might do, and now, and it would be, I might go down to Perry County, and then maybe, maybe take that two, two blocks, if we can.